Okay, it is so two we'll go ahead and call the order the November 5th meeting of the Well Dari Five J Board of Education Order. If you take a moment, silence your cell phones and walkie talkies.
Rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jessica, please take your role.
Monica Johnson.
Here.
Amanda Proctor.
Here.
Me, Sisana.
Here.
Amy Musgrave.
Michael Wells.
Here.
Ian Keever.
Here.
And Eda Bellasol.
Do you have any changes to the agenda for this evening? Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
We'll approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice President Sisana, seconded by Director Proctor to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any citizen comments on the agenda items? Okay, well, let's move over to our student celebrations and recognitions Superintendent Nielsen.
Thanks President Wells and board members. As I think about the celebration tonight, it is a it's a great time district right now. And, you know, one of the things that this time of the year brings is end fall sports seasons and tremendous success this year for us. As I think about fall, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the send offs they do at Roosevelt High School because I think that's a pretty unique opportunity for all of the Roosevelt High Schools to celebrate students and teams that are head of the state. And this fall, we have had teams sent off in Saul, boys and girls cross country, gymnastics is this Friday, and boys golf. And we still have volleyball, I think as regionals this say, and football is another week away from from starting the tournament. So that's when you thought how our teams are performing, that's a pretty successful fall. And then we also had a send off for one of our FFA groups that went to Indiana. And there's a couple individuals that came back that will be celebrating, we're asking for celebrations December with you. So they went to Indiana and brought back a couple awards. I can't remember the judging, me judging, Dara judging. So excited about that. So again, super, super excited. Some of you were able to attend the ribbon cutting at MIS that happened last week. The Smart Lab ribbon was the week before. So some good energy at Milliken Intermediate School. I think since last time we were here, we actually had our assistant principal meeting at MIS so that all of our assistant principals could get a sense of how that building starts in the morning because it's pretty unique, pretty special, what they're doing in terms of just setting the stage every morning. And if you get a chance just to watch Mr. Plaisance and the way he engages with single student in the building on a day to day basis, plus front office staff. So we just wanted all of our other APs to get a flavor and get a sense. And that's prompted some conversations at the other schools, which is pretty unique. That's what that's what PD should do. We had a chance, Tammy and I had a chance to get up to an opportunity for students, middle school students up at Ames that I've talked about the last two years called Get In The Guts. And it's all health sciences opportunities are all short little bursts. But one example was the students walk into a room and it's it's a car accident. And so they're asked to help out. And the way they've set up the scene is they've got an adult in the car, a student in the car, and then an adult that's on the ground in front. And so they're asking students to engage in CPR and using the ventilator, whatever the that thing, Andy, you probably be able to tell me what that's called. The thing you whether you instead of breathing in, it's yeah. So it's just neat to watch, right? Students, they get their heart rates a little bit going as they walk in the room. But it was just neat to see those experiences. One of the one of the rooms they're in, they're actually inside of a cavity of a body. And they're able to with the cameras try to go in and fish for, and they have, you know, yarn and whatever inside, but they're able to see through the little camera what's going on in there. And the kids, so it's just neat to see the experience the students have up at Ames. And then Ames does that on an annual basis, not just for us, for multiple districts around us. And as they're there, they they talk about programs that are offered, both from the school perspective, but how that feeds Ames. So it's neat to see.
And that's middle, middle school, right?
Middle school students, yep. And our kids were awesome. They were celebrated. I think we got an email from a club staff members at Milliken Middle talking about the compliments our students received around how they were showing up and showing up as riders in the in that area is awesome. Because that's not always true, right? Particularly when you're talking about always with middle school students. So for our middle school students to show up and engage and take as much as they can out, but also represent cool. I did want to let board members know, but also the community know that we we have engaged, you know, we've begun to leverage one of the modulars that sits outside of MIS as what we're calling the cottages. And it offers things good out of here for a while in terms of clothing and other things that families might need that we were able to provide some here. We're leveraging that space now, and it will become also a food pantry that will be open for limited times, but also open by appointment. Right now, we've just been doing it by appointment. And we've had families that are asking to come and and get some of what they need. But many of our families are asking to do it anonymously. So they're asking to be able to show up and who's there because they don't necessarily want other people to know. But we did receive a grant from the Well Trust to support the opening of that. Year one, the Well Trust has given us almost $87,000.
Nice.
And year two, they're giving us $40,000. And so that will, the year one will help us fridges, freezers, the things we don't have for the food pantry side, a ramp to make sure that it's accessible. But it will help us get that set up. It's also help us a little bit with some staffing. Our we will add some job responsibilities to our liaisons that right now operate in both the Milliken buildings as a start to support families that are looking for support in different ways. So that's been neat to see that come to fruition and the energy and the Well Trust was super supportive of that, doing that kind of program. Greeley's got them at almost every elementary school. But they were super complimentary of ours and the comprehensive nature of of providing for needs. It's not just about food. It's not just about clothing, but it might be some other household supplies that families need. So Ally Ham has done a great job of getting that set up. But but I don't know that we'd be able to do it the way we're doing it without support from the Well Trust. I just wanted you all to know that. Since we met last, we did a CTE advisory meeting and Amanda was there, I think. But but that's good to just see and celebrate ongoing growth. I think Rebecca does a nice job at that event of continuing to show the opportunities and how those are enhancing each year, right? What we're providing as a district for our students. And that night was particularly occupied high quality in terms of student voice that was also there. That's increased over the last couple of years in terms of, I think, almost every, maybe every pathway had at least one student meeting with the advisory group. I think that's an enhancement. And I think quite frankly, that's something the board has influenced in talking about student voice and how important student voice is. So and I think I'll stop there celebrations and save the rest for Superintendent reports.
Any other celebrations or questions about?
Scott, I just have a question. How do you get the word out about that food bank? I didn't quite understand the process of how you're pulling families in. Also, I think you were talking about a move bag?
Yes, that's the one. Thank you for putting words around my thinking. We haven't gone wide in terms of advertising yet because we it's only open by appointment right now. So families at MIS MES are where Ally has been working with families in need for about a year.
Okay.
That new to come here, now they're they're connecting with her. But we will use the website and Facebook once it's ready to go to talk about the hours it's open. Right now, we don't have any hours of operations yet. But once we do, we were just talking about that marketing of it yesterday. And so more to follow in terms of how we'll market it broader. But I think right now, Ally is surprised how much energy she's got just through the connections she already has. So.
Are we gonna also try to reach out to the community for donations? Or are we just gonna rely on Wells and those grants?
No, we will leverage our community for support. And we've got a board member who brought in, I think, several bags of super.
Support.
And to that, I also, I was telling Scott, so I Nate, I got to see it the day of the STEM ribbon cutting. And the next day, I got the newsletter from March, and there was a big article about it in that. So it went out to all of our congregation. So.
I'm jealous. I'm always at work when you try to go see all this cool stuff. You need to just drop in some.
Yeah, let us know. We'd be happy to show you around. Ally, I know would love to. I will tell you, Ally has been very strategic because there's lots of other entities that that are working in the community to support. And she's met with those independent groups. Our goal is not step on toes or to move into anyone's territory. Our goal is to add to. And we don't have a comprehensive anywhere where you can go and shop for your student clothing and get food in, food in, get food. But but Ally also surprising when we walk through, right? She's got a ton of bedding, which is something that's not often thought about. I think she's she's got 100 things of bedding. And all we had to pay was a couple hundred bucks to shit in. Everything was donated to us. She's got these ready to go backpacks or duffel bags that are students and by age and have, you know, a toy, a stuffed animal, one set of new clothes. And, you know, we had to take them that we're not going to add or we're not going to take away from what's in the back in the bags because they've created them. And she's just, she's doing work beyond just local to figure out how to bring resources locally for families need. So.
Thanks.
Yep.
I would decide if you get a chance to go see it, any of us, go see it. It's it's a little bit overwhelming when you walk in there and see the scope of the place. And and she's just really getting started. And it's all a little bit overwhelming. At least it was for me. I don't, she, Ally is doing a great job. So just from from me, from us, I think I want to recognize her somehow. I don't know exactly how we do that. But she is doing a great job connecting us with things, connecting them with resources. It's, she's done a great job. So kudos to her.
I'm just gonna keep going on that, too, because one of the things we talked a little bit about, and Scott mentioned privacy, but we also asked if if there would be opportunities for students to the opportunity to work in there, maybe not necessarily with people who are patrons of the cottages, but to learn the the backend of the things, you know, stocking the shelves and taking inventory and maybe whatever, whatever it is they need to do. But another opportunity for students who might not be able to get out into the to Greeley or Loveland or some of the bigger towns and get jobs where they have get some retail experience.
Another great idea is I know it's getting about the time of year where the schools are trying to clean out their lost and found. It'd be great if we could get the lost and found funneled through the cottages versus being funneled elsewhere as well.
Yeah, that's already, that one's already popped out.
Doug, I mean, Doug brought it up about material that we're not even using, like furniture. How can we use, how can we take?
Take the nice water bottles that could go to the cottages.
We'd have to get another, you guys have another modular you can move forward to us?
I can tell you one of the, one of the girls, I have a whole cupboard of water bottles.
We all do.
We all do. It's obscene. I don't know.
I got a new one yesterday. And my wife, I brought it home. My wife's like, ow.
I need a new one. I need a new one.
Any other celebrations?
I kind of wanted to piggyback off of.
Sorry, yes. I saw you, I see you getting all ready over there.
Just because Superintendent Nielsen mentioned all the exciting things happening happening at Roosevelt, I just wanted to highlight that as of last night, the Palms are seven time league champions.
Yay.
In a row, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So congrats to them. Cheers competing at leagues as well tonight. As you said, we're sending off gymnastics Friday for state, but they were regional champs as well. Cross country, we had a fourth place finisher. Elizabeth, I was gonna say Emma, like, that's not right. Elizabeth Roberts. And also, part of the FFA convention, I know we have a student, I think she's a grad, but we had a student, I'm gonna butcher this, I'm so sorry, Hallie Bill. How, I don't know how to say that. I'm so sorry for butchering that. But I wanted to highlight her specifically because she received her FFA degree. And from the information I was given, less than 1% of FFA members are awarded that honor. So congrats to her. Seeing as FFA is a huge organization. And I also wanted to highlight the real the marketing around play, which is opening night's tomorrow night. So I encourage everyone to see that. They've they've been super active on social media. And like, I think every day they've been posting something for the past two weeks. So the word has definitely gone out there. And during our advisory, they need a little trailer to show us. And it looks really cool. So props to them for that. We talked about all the cool things. So I thought I'd throw in a couple more than I knew.
Did you have one more about your own celebrations? She's like, what did I do?
What did I do?
Just your wonderful accomplishment in finishing Strong with marching band, your contribution to the marching band.
Senior.
Yes.
We had senior night last Thursday. And no surprise, I cried in, this is funny, I didn't cry until I got off field and we did our little huddle. And we, as drum majors, we have this special tradition where when one person is called to a salute, everyone is supposed to like cheer and say, yay, you're so cool. So my co drum major Julius Junior, he wanted to give me a little send off. So in our huddle, he's like, hey, we need a send off for extremely amazing senior drum major. And so he followed me to a salute. And everyone was like, yay. And I didn't cry then because then he caught of it. And then we did our thing. And then like, after he did it, he was, he was like, hello. And then I lost it. And yeah, that was a very special night for me. It was a really amazing go out. We had a lot of fun. The seniors did a lot of really amazing things. We did our senior sign outs. And yeah, that was, that was a night I didn't think would come a long time. But that was.
Sneaks up on you, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's all I have for celebrations.
Nielsen. I'm just gonna dovetail on the FFA thing. So my nephew was part of that team. And he's so low key, so low key about this. His mom calls him and says, how'd you guys do? And he goes, uh, we got silver. I'm just like, oh, that's great. He's like, yeah. I mean, that's probably how the conversation, like, yeah. Gets home, Hopkins posts the, or I don't know, Hopkins, they posted it on Facebook. Well, he actually, he actually got silver as well. And so his mom's like, what? You got silver too? He's like, oh, yeah. So, so when he's here in December, I'm gonna, we're gonna, I'm really celebrate him. So.
He's sure with his face on.
That's a good idea. And I've got time to do it.
You got time.
Yeah, silver, shmiver. Let's go on to our board reports. I'll just start with you, Mr. Girak.
Had a good past month. So we had cross country qualified, both boys and girls teams for the first time since 2008, 15 years running. And boys qualified once in that stretch, girls qualified four times. Finally, both at the same time was a great feeling. The boys finished 16th overall out of 20, girls finished 11th. So it's really impressive year for cross country. And I'm looking, really looking forward to the growth that it still has for the next coming. Been the CTE Advisory Board. Was that last week or the week before? So Rebecca had a, did a great job putting that on. A lot of student voice. I was a part of the business committee. So we were able to go over what classes, can we offer, what classes are we trying to offer? Can we even do it? Also, the big challenges about personal finance now being a state mandate and seeing how we can brainstorm to not get rid of any of our CTE classes, not get rid of, or miss out on CTE funding. So it's pretty challenging to figure out which classes can we do? Are we going to put it into an American government unit? Are we going to hire a completely new teacher? Where are we going to put them? So there's some challenges with that. And then, on, yesterday, we had FBLA District Planning, one of the district conference team this year for FBLA. So we went up to University of Colorado, like this, and looked at where we're going to set up the conference, where certain speakers are going to go, how judging's going to work this year. Seeing events, about 600 students come. So it's a challenge to put on, make sure everything goes smoothly. And then we had the MIS ribbon cutting. It's great to go there, see the Smart Lab. I'm really excited for what that building has to come. I've already had one workshop in there, the night success lab, small trucure skills to some of those kids, had them take an existing product and make a different use out of them. And it was pretty cool to see the the things that they come up with having, like turning Air Jordans into like hats or something ridiculous. I mean, it was, it was really cool to see how creative they are. I wish high school students could be that creative. But that's my month.
Yeah, I wish high school students could be that creative, too, sometimes. Yeah, previously mentioned, had senior night two weeks ago for band. But because they won that night and hoping that they win tomorrow, not tomorrow, right, there's potential that our program team gets to host a football or a home playoff game, which has not happened since my freshman year. So I'm super excited if that does happen because I love one last time we played cut band in the stand football. I was sick for two weeks. Oh, that was fun. I didn't mention this, him and I met with Shelby Gilliam, the president of the Millian State of Roosevelt Turning Point USA chapter. And there was a, at least for me, there was a lot of, I'm scared going into the meeting just because I I didn't know what to expect, what their goals were. But talking to Shelby, and Shelby's a really good friend of mine. I've known her for now. And so we had, we, three of us had a real. And so we had, we, three of us had a really good conversation about what what their goals are as a chapter. And even though Turning Point USA is historically in a conservative movement, she is opening up the chapter to anyone of any background, any political affiliation. And she really wants to use it as a space for students to come and have conversations about what's going on in our world and talk about the, talk about our country, talk about our free enterprise. And I think it'll be very educational for, I think it'll be educational for Liam and I as board members, because we both want to sit in on those meetings and and engage in these types of conversations. I think it'll be educational for students who may, might, you know, know a lot about our constitution, about our free market. And I think it'll be educational for the advisors, because they'll get to see how our youth may think and interact with each other. She has an amazing plan laid out and I'm very proud and impressed with her, how she's handled this. And I know getting a student organization started up is really hard, because it's a student, like I said previously, it's a student organization, it's not a school-sponsored club, just because there's a since it's technically, it has stuff to do with political affiliations, but she has persevered and again, I'm super proud of her for that. She's really worked extremely hard to bring this, to to bring opportunity for people to learn from each other and promote just having a conversation, a peaceful, intelligent conversations about stuff that's going on in our country. And I'm super excited for that. So props to her. I've also had a lot of meetings recently with Interact Club Sources of Strength and we've been talking a lot about how to help those in the community who are losing SNAP benefits. And it's been two different things, because with Interact, we already kind of have a hand in that, because our, one of our freshmen, Holly Borson, she's the length of the Hunger Heroes, which is also known as the Backpack Program. So we're just working on kind of pushing that out to people. One, getting people to come volunteer and help. But also two, like getting the word out to people maybe in need, maybe, may be in need of a program like that. And then through sources, there's not a ton we can do, but we're known as the advocate on the schools. So we're working on getting information out to people. So we've been promoting the Backpack Program. And we are also encouraging people who want to help out with the food, with the food bank to either donate cans, but it seems like from the representation they gave about a week ago, that that they're really needing money, because yes, the canned food isn't helpful, but they can get that stuff for a lot cheaper. So it's, it's better just money-wise if they get direct donations. So if there's anything you're looking into helping out with, I encourage you all to go help that out. But I've also been thoroughly impressed of how our community's come together during this time. As you guys have mentioned about our program is also going on in the district. So I'm really, really proud of our community for that. And it really just shows that in times when we can all come together. So sorry, I went all tinned in there, but that's all I can have.
Do I need to turn my mic just? I don't have a really long report, but I was able to meet with Superintendent last week and we had a one-on-one meeting, which was really nice. And got caught up on all the great things happening around the district. And we did talk a lot about the cottage and I'm just excited about everyone else. I think it's great when people can go and receive items that they really need for, there's, there's not going to be a charge. Everything is free of charge, from what I understand. And not that we would ever discourage donating to any place else, but other places do have overhead. And this is a great place to donate where there is not an overhead for people that need to go and get items. So I was really excited about that. And we also were able to, to work with Club Interact at the library. I just am always so impressed with Club Interact and their willingness. We had our big Halloween party. The teachers, the teachers, which I love and appreciate, they always make their schedules lately, don't you think, Tammy? To have Halloween off, which I think is brilliant, because why wouldn't you? Why wouldn't you? So those kids need someplace to go on Halloween. So we, we throw a great big library party on Halloween. And the community showed up big time. I think we had 430 people in the building in two hours. I mean, it's very apparent that we've grown out of our space. So we're grateful for the progress being made on the new Millikan Public Library adjacent to MIS. But Club Interact was great. They're so organized, they're so willing to help, they cleaned up and and helped with so many avenues for the kids to rotate through. So what a great resource they are to our community. And I love the direction of leadership that our staff members at the high school give to the students who then show up and lead that team. So just really grateful to work with Club Interact. And I think that's all I have on my report.
All right. So the last month I've attended the football games, of course, at home. And I am so appreciative. I was sitting at a football game last Thursday night or whatever and I realized it was the first football game where like I've not had wet stuff blowing at my face. Like, there's not been a game that's been bad weather. We've had like such great weather this year. Usually there's one where you're like wet and soggy and miserable and you're just sitting there. But I, so I do share that we've had a good weather for all the football games. I've been to a few cheer competitions. Roosevelt Cheer does Boobash every year. It's one of their bigger fundraisers. They do dance in the morning and cheer in the evening. And the amount of people that were at that school was literally insane. Like, I got stuck at concessions for four hours working. And then when I could finally leave and I walked around, like there, the filled house was full of people, the pack was full of people. There were people on the hallways, like, it was, it was wild. Like, to see that many people show up from all over.
Was it scary?
Too, it was very scary. And then what I appreciated, I don't know if it was like quince or not, it seemed like the janitors were like these saintly people who would come at just the right time, or custodians, I'm sorry, would come at just the right time to like empty the trash and take care of the bathrooms. And in a big event with that many people, I was really impressed with them. They were so nice. They were like talking to everyone. So I thought it was a really ball-run event. Then the CTE meeting was really good. I had a, Rebecca and I talked for probably about a half an hour between like the dinner and the rest of it. And dinner, you missed out, man. So they had three desserts. Like, I know you like cake, so they had three desserts. They had a churro cheesecake, which was so amazing. And then they had flan. And I don't even like flan and it was good.
Did the students make it?
Yeah. And then snickerdoodles. And one of the girls I've known for a long time was working it. And she brought me, like Rebecca's talking, and she brought me a warky to the table. Like, that was like, I've never had such thing. I sat at the construction group table for dinner and it was really interesting. Our partnership with AMP continues to pay dividends. The gentleman sitting next to me wasn't a large talker, but when he did talk, he was very excited about his work experience he's getting at AMP and what he's doing there. And the further, what further impressed me is I got to talk to Mr. Thompson, who was sitting across from me, and ask him about the new construction geometry class. I can't remember the course name we did. He said he has 44 kids in that class. I thought it was frickin' wild. I just thought it was wild. Like, I think that we continue to have demand for non-traditional classes teaching traditional subjects, or however you want to say. I really do think we need to look at how we can move staff around to staff something like that, because kids, I mean, he was so excited to talk about it. It's kids that really are struggling. And just for the numbers, if it's any surprise, it's 42 boys and two girls who are doing it, but yeah, I'm really.
And he should, he did share some stuff. Did you see that?
Yeah. I think that's what triggered it, because I was picking his brain, because I just wanted to understand like what did the class, what, how many kids were interested and how it was going. Because sometimes you don't know if you add a course, whether it's gonna have five kids or not. And beyond capacity in that class right now, but. And then the MIS ribbon cutting. And I appreciate Alan and all of his, all of his emotion. I do have to say, if Alan and Michael like sit in between me, like it's all done for, we're all just gonna sit there and cry, but. No, I appreciate it. It was really well done. And Kate, thank you for making me look cool in that video. I didn't even know I could look cool to you, but thank you. I don't, I don't think so. But it was a good, it was good editing. Thank you.
All right. So I don't have much to report. I do the, the MIS STEM, uh, Smart Lab ribbon cutting was a lot of fun to attend. To see those kids in that space, designing, coding, working together, all the things that they're supposed to do in that space was, was really fun. And to see Mr. Pleisance and Mr. Cahoon's engaging with the kids was really cool to see. That's, it's, it's exciting. I don't have much to report today, as I haven't been able to do a lot of school board work over the last month or so. But I do have a comment I'd like to make. And that is really just to say thank you. And mostly this is for folks that are watching or might watch later. But most of you probably know that my wife, who was also a teacher in this district, was diagnosed with early stress cancer a couple of months ago. She's had surgery to remove that, it was very successful. And is in the midst of chemotherapy to make sure it doesn't come back. That's all gonna be fine. She'll be back to work soon, probably sooner than she should, because that's the kind of strength that she has in this, we'll all be fine. But what I really want to say is thank you to the community that is this school district. The amount of support that my family has received over the last few weeks has truly touched our hearts. We aren't the kind of people that ask for help well, receive help well. We tend to be the helpers. And it's been very humbling to experience the outpouring of love and support that has come our way. We haven't cooked a meal in our house in more than a month. Because so many folks wanted to take that burden off of our households. The number of calls, texts, cards and notes, those letting us know they were praying or sending good thoughts across the community have been truly special. I can't tell you how many times our kids have come home and said someone at school has just checked on them, just to ask how they're doing. And that speaks volumes about the staff in our schools. The island in our, has at times looked like a flower garden, because so many people have sent beautiful flowers and support. The number of cards from students and staff and the community that sit on our mantle is inspiring. They are literally three and four deep on our mantle. The financial support that was raised by the students and staff in this district and families, particularly of Pioneer Ridge, has truly brought us to our knees. And frankly, I shouldn't be surprised by this reaction from those in this district. It isn't the first time that our community has responded to difficult circumstances like this, and it certainly won't be the last. This is just what you all do. But to experience it firsthand is truly humbling and heartwarming. We often treat our district like it's a family, and sometimes that seems more true than others. But when you witness this kind of support for a member of this family, it really brings it home how much of a family we are. So in the midst of all this, thank you seems pretty small. But to everyone in this room, to everyone who may watch later, to everyone who sent a card or a text or a call or flowers, to everyone who donated or sent a meal or a treat, to everyone who has sent up a prayer or a good thought for us from the bottom of all of our hearts, thank you. Your turn.
Yeah, thanks. I don't know if that was harder for you or me.
I had a chance to like prep it.
I know. Well, I'll make mine super short, because I don't know that I can go through much of this. The, the ribbon cuttings at MIS were awesome. You know, just had an opportunity to kind of sit there and reflect on the bond projects coming to a close. Kind of, because I think we have some stuff to, our agenda, but I mean, really, the, the meat of the projects are coming to a close. And I really want to say a thanks to, to the team that, that worked on MIS. Because I think the vision all along was to take that campus and do something really unique for the community. Whether that was gonna be a school or, you know, we, we've thrown out a lot of ideas with what we can do at that, at that site. And it's just really cool to, to to have gone through a lot of naysayers saying, you know, you're just throwing everything, throwing everything away there. And we kept saying, just wait, just wait, just wait, just be patient. To see what it's become. And I had an opportunity to talk with the mayor of Millikan at the, at the ribbon cutting, the official ribbon cutting. And we discussed, you know, how this piece of ground in the center of town is becoming the center of the town. Because we, now we have the school there, we have the cottages there, we have the library coming soon. And who knows what else? I mean, there's, there's a lot of opportunities still on that site and a lot of promise. So that was, it was nice. It was part of me is sad to kind of, to see the end of the construction projects, because it's always as cool to see the new and exciting cool things we're doing. But that was a good way to end it, by seeing those cool things. Yeah, Alan, at the, at the, he got a little emotional. And then he looked at me like he was looking at me for support. And I, I was like, in tears, because he's crying. He's, he quickly had to look away from me, so. That wasn't a good thing. But yeah, what another cool deal. And I, I was gonna say that, that's another thing about MIS. Having been a Millikan Mustang myself, it's really hard to go in that building and not feel like you're in a middle school. But there's a different vibe. It's not an elementary school. It doesn't feel like a traditional elementary school. It definitely feels like it's, it's, it's the Smart Lab. It's the things that Alan was doing before to build character in, in the students. There's, there, there's definitely a step up from elementary. And you just feel it when you're in there and you see the students, you see the staff. But yeah, the, the, the Smart Lab is a really cool thing to, to see, because I can remember, I was the first, I was the first sixth grade, I was the first class to use that as a library. When I was in fifth grade, it was a courtyard. Over that summer, they built that library. So my, my sixth grade class was the first class to use that as a library. And I spent a lot of time at the library. You know, just devoured books. And honestly, that was, that was the extent to the exposure I had into the things that interested me. And it was funny that they were talking about a lot, they were doing a lot of stuff with robotics and a lot of stuff with robots. I were checking out a book in there and it was called My Robot Buddy. And it was about a kid who had an android robot. And that was as close as I could ever get to a robot at that time. And to, to fast forward to where we are now, these guys are building robots, they're designing robots, they're designing the prims to move the robots. That was really cool to see, because I, I think, and we, we all know, but it's, it's that ability to actually engage with something and say, I really like this. Or, and this isn't as cool as I thought it was, but hey, I'm glad I got the opportunity to do it. I'm, it's just so awesome that we can provide that to, to each side. So well done, everybody on that, on that MIS project. I know it's, it's not the big shining star that Roosevelt High School is. But what a, what a great thing for, for this district and this community. So I really appreciate that. The other thing I'm gonna add, our, well, World County Workforce Development Board Youth Committee, our next meeting's gonna be in November. Dr. Albert is gonna be one of the speakers. She's gonna be talking about all the innovative grams for workforce readiness. So work learning, internships. I can go through the whole list, Career Academies, that, so, which is really, where was I today? I heard, I was at Hayes and I heard a young lady trying to explain to her coworker, not a young lady, that she is in a Career Academy and this is what a Career Academy actually means. This is how it works. And so Dr. Albert is gonna try to encapsulate all of that, so we can talk with a little more intelligence in our communities about all, all the innovation that's happening there. That's all I have. Any, anything else? Did we miss anything? Yes, you can.
I forgot to mention this in my report, but really I've had the privilege to volunteer and help out with the MIS Music Club, which fits into that KSO after-school stuff they've been doing. It's one of the things that they do after school on Thursdays, open robotics. And I would totally agree with you that the vibe of that school, it, it does feel like a little school, but it doesn't feel like an elementary school. But I feel like that's the beauty of it, because these kids- but I feel like that's the beauty of it, um, because these kids are getting, um, probably like the most accelerated experience, like out of the district in my opinion, um, because being in that music room and like, we've talked about this so many times, like my reaction during that tour, I was like, wow, I never got this, but it's so cool, like getting to work with these kids, and I've only been once, just 'cause like it had some things here and there, but, um, like those, these kids, like they have, I've been working with the Woodwinds and, uh, so far I've only worked with the clarinets, which is really interesting because I don't play clarinet, but I was like, hey, I can teach three instruments, that's fine. Um, and just their excitement is so, um, it, it just makes me so happy because, uh, I, I got that opportunity to immerse myself before middle school, like, like, unlike some of the kids in my, uh, in the current high school band, but like just to see them, like, really, I, I need a sound. They've been so cool, like the, like no other place in the, so far has an opportunity for them, and that is just, it's just so amazing getting to be involved in that. Um, and I'm super excited about the STEM lab for them as well, 'cause like you said, they're getting a chance to explore all their interests, I think that's so important, especially at that age, is finding out what you like, and so that's definitely one of the advantages of it, not feeling like a traditional elementary school, is they get to kind of mature as individuals, to figuring out who they are, and I would really love that aspect.
That was it. All right, well, let's move on to our report from the superintendent's office. Scott.
Thanks, Will, as board members, um, when I think about the last couple of weeks, a lot of, uh, the work is what I, we've been engaged in, it's pretty cool, but I wanna call out, um, to start with, uh, the play, it starts tomorrow night. Assistant Superintendent Crenshaw and I got to end the dress rehearsal, which when you're looking at our position, one of the, going to a play is awesome, but when you're watching what students do, a dress rehearsal's even better, um, because we got to see them prep for it, we were in the audience, there were three adults and a hundred and fifty stuffed animals, so it was, it was, but it was, it was awesome to see the students talking about getting ready, the mics getting ready to slip up before they go on, um, the pep talks, they're talking about how it all works. Um, it was really neat and worth seeing, it, they did an awesome job, but I wanted to illuminate it a little bit because we talked about performing arts, um, and the growth in our band and our hair. There were forty students in that circle, and they were having conversations about being too big to do the circle the way they've done it the last couple of years because they have so many people wanting to participate, both on stage, but also backstage and running the lights and running the, the microphones, that it's, I mean, you think, four students, um, that's a big group involved in that, just like we're seeing in our band and our choir all the way through. So I, I just wanna, uh, put a plug in for that, I, it was well worth seeing, but also it was cool from our perspective, to be able to see the, the other side of it too, was really neat. Um, we have had, uh, we've got our second cohort in my tenure of aspiring admin, um, we have our session number two, and we have great, um, leaders or future leaders sitting with us in there. Um, it's been awesome to have the, the couple meetings we have, but you get a chance to see, um, their rhythm with what's next for them, but then as we're out in, in buildings, you get a chance to see the work they're doing and how, uh, it's enhancing what's happening in the buildings as well, so that's, that's pretty awesome to see, just as we think about building a bench, um, something I think is critical for a district to continue to, to move itself. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about professional development that happened this last weekend because, or Friday, um, because at the elementary level, we did what they call a, um, an ed camp, which we took feedback from teachers about what they wanted, um, and we asked teachers who was willing to lead some of what the teachers wanted, so we end up having PD for teachers by teachers, and the feedback was off the charts. And that comes after, um, the previous session where we did professional development, where we had all three elementary schools now well and meet as grade level teams, and the feedback there was awesome. Um, so I, I, I say that to talk about, to, to call out our PD team, um, led by Karen Weiser, who is just doing an awesome job of trying to, to get us what we need, but do it in a way that, that allows our staff to feel heard and valued, instead of it's, it's top-down, it's here, we're gonna fit this on you, and we're doing it a way where we're growing the practices we wanna see, so it's a, it's a, it's like a perfect storm in that sense, so, um, kudos to Karen and the work she's doing with her team. Um, the, and then the last thing I just want to say, and President Will, you talked a little bit about the, the ending of the bond projects, and those are all awesome, but as a district, they're also, uh, they, they get in the way of the work, right? And so we think about MES and, and all the work we did in a beautiful school, wonderful elementary, and we moved kids around to make that happen. The focus right now, when we're out and doing our one-on-ones, on instruction and meeting the kids where they are and building relationships is amazing. I, the last two weeks I've had one-on-ones with all the principals, the last couple of days I've been in MES, MIS, Pioneer Ridge, doing one-on-ones, but also walking through virtually every classroom, and the focus on engaging students in learning, it warms my heart, 'cause that's what it's all about, right? Is helping students to move, seeing students liking what they're doing, engaged. Um, but yesterday, unique, when I was walking through parts of MES, they were, they're working on second step, which is around how we, what they're working on was how we treat each other, and it was so awesome to see the students talking about how they helped their sisters at home, or how they helped their brother at home, or what they helped mom at home, or how they, they've been helped by other people, and these are first graders having this conversation. It's really, really rich to see that kind of, um, connection to, um, how we show up for other people, um, which I think Nate is how I think about, you just talked about it, from the community, but it starts early, right? In terms of how we, how we show up for each other, and, and it just warmed my heart to see that kind of work being done by all of our teachers at that grade level, um, focused on, um, taking care of each other, and, and one, um, particular classroom yesterday, the, the teacher had, had, uh, been able to, to get a specific book for every student in that grade level, and when you were watching the reading of the book, it's two young girls, and they're playing on a playground together, and at one point, girl number two says, let's go to your house and get some food, and they show up at that girl's house, and she opens the fridge and all that's in there is milk. And then you see the, the, the girl whose house it is, like, please don't tell anybody, and the other girl is wrestling with, how do I help? Um, and that's what they're engaged in, right? Is they're thinking through this, this, I'll say the social emotional side of the work, um, but it also helps with the belonging, right? Is to understand that we are living in that, that environment always, right? Where we always can extend a hand for different reasons, and it was awesome yesterday for me to be able to see students that were, um, engaged in, in the very thing that Nate was just talking about at a first grade level is pretty amazing, so, um, it's been exciting to be out and see the work, um, the last couple, since we've been here, the, whatever it was, a month ago, I guess, it's, it's awesome to see what teachers are doing in our classes.
Why not, we might need to have a permanent installation of tissue paper, or we need to go to numbers. Oh, look at that, we got any questions for Superintendent?
Michael, dry us up.
Yeah, quickly. Thank you, Scott. Yeah, let's, we'll move on to our superintendent, or our CFO's report, Mr. Evers.
Thanks, Mr. Will, members of the Board of Education and Superintendent Nielsen. Uh, tonight I'd just like to go through the CFO report. Um, basically, um, with the, there's a couple of different sections in the CFO report that's come around, so with the financial statements, uh, review, uh, basically the overall, uh, is the overall observation on it is, is that we're really kinda right where we would be expected to be at this point in time in the year. Um, you know, we just kinda started, um, this report is for the month of September, so it's kind of our first full month of activity, um, for the new school year. Um, so, looking at, so you know, again, we received, you know, thirty-one point four-nine percent of monthly budgeted revenue, expended nine point three-two percent of monthly budgeted expenditures, um, on individual school expenditures, you know, again, everyone's kinda where we would expect them to be at this time. Uh, going to the next slide, it's just kind of shows the percentage budget spent, um, for the current month of September and then year to date. Looking at the next slide, um, district departments, our departments expended ninety-one point one-four percent of our monthly visits. Looking at the following slide, um, you know, when you get with the departments, there was no, there, there's really no outlining or red flags, um, at this point in time. Um, other district funds, um, here again, kinda right where we would expect to be at this point in time, um, expenditure-wise, and then the following slide is kinda giving some monthly breakdown and the year-to-date breakdown. And then on the next, we can go to the next slide. Um, so then also, so then kind of the second section of my report is, we had, um, an evaluation by S and P Global, um, for bond rating. Um, S and P Global reviews the credit, creditworthiness of the district every three years. Um, on October seventeenth, um, they issued a, a review of the district's credit rating, and it was lowered from double A minus to A plus. Uh, the review process did both negative and positive financial factors for the district. And if we look at the following slide for the positive factors, um, just a couple of these, um, you know, we are in one of the fastest-growing counties in Colorado, you know, Weld County. The expectation that growth will continue in the district, that's obviously positive. Um, looking at the next slide, um, there were some negative factors. Um, kind of, uh, one of the pervasive things that they talked about was, is kind of the economic concentration of oil and gas development, um, in our, in our district. Um, you know, that, and how that kind of spills into both our assessed valuation and also just kind of general employment in our community, um, just having a concentration like that, how that is a risk factor. It's not necessarily bad, but it is a risk factor, um, when they look at, um, our capacity to repay our bonds. Um, another factor that, um, that, that they pointed out was, um, the recent deficits the district has had in its general fund, uh, driven primarily from salary increases for staff, um, you know, and as, you know, the board knows, um, you know, we did spend down fund balance, um, in, you know, the last couple of years, um, that has been built up over the pandemic, you know, with the pandemic programs, the savings that the district was able to, uh, utilize from the pandemic programs went into fund balance, and then fund balance went into, um, being able to become more competitive with other districts in our region, um, from a, from a staff salary standpoint. Um, and then also kind of one other thing that they pointed out is that, you know, we were budgeted, or we are budgeted currently, the deficit, you know, current year. Um, one thing that Superintendent Nielsen and I kinda talked about is that had we been a little more aggressive, you know, what our student count projections would be, you know, we wouldn't have, you know, things that had a deficit or not, that have had as large of a budgeted deficit in that regard, so, um, that's kind of one area where, um, kind of my inherent financial conservatism maybe kind of, you know, affected us.
Or to insist a little bit, yeah.
So, um, but yeah, so that was.
Michael, do you, do you mind if I ask a question? We can't amend the budget.
We will do that in January, or last year did in January.
So the deficit will not be accounted for in January?
Yeah, um, it, it'll greatly reduce or, um, flip to the other side.
So can you elaborate a little on our lack of long-term financial planning and also overwhelmed reserve policy?
Sure.
I think those two, I guess, are.
So, um, and so in regards to the first one, the, uh, long-term financial planning, we, I mean, we actually, we're currently engaged in a long-term capital planning project with the, um, Long-Term Planning Committee. Um, as far as long-term financial planning, what they're really talking about is just having multi-year projections, um, for the district, um, which we don't currently do.
Okay, and what about our, we, we don't do, I thought we did do that when we had, okay. Um, so they recommend we start doing that, is that, or is that just observation they have?
That's an observation, I mean, and that's a practice that many districts do engage in, is, um, you know, engaging in some, some, some type of long-range financial planning. I mean, we already do, we are currently long-range capital planning, um, but the financial planning, especially, I mean, kind of with how, how it's been, I mean, we're kinda getting into a stable, um, you know, run rate, you know, my first several years here, it was really kind of a little, little difficult to, to plan for, um, so, but yeah, that was, um, that was an observation that they made.
Mr. Evers, can I add too, I think, Director Muskrat, I think particularly the reserve policy is something, we've had some conversations in one-on-ones over the last nine months, that is something that I would recommend that our board think about, both your own reserve, right? Board has a reserve, but we don't have a policy that says what should that reserve sit at, and remember the conversations that we had last year around the board reserve, but also thinking about how do we have a district reserve that we get to a certain level, um, that is in policy, um, is a step that some districts have taken, and we have not yet, but I think it's one that, that there's interest in the board to do and would be positive for this type of, of rating, but I think it's also positive as we get into other things that we do in the system. The other thing I would just say in terms of the long-term capital planning, the district longer than I've been here is engaged with Shannon Bigum, um, who has given us projections in terms of enrollment, and it's been hit and miss because of the growth going on. Shannon's really good at what he does, which is why he's the only demographer in Colorado that does schools, um, and like this year, he missed for us, right? He missed by fifty or sixty kids, something like that, so it was a pretty big miss, so I think working toward that, I think the, the long-range planning of what do we wanna do, um, in stages in this district is a, a good practice for us to do, and I think we've been asked by board members to engage in a long-range planning process that doesn't stop, where I think in the past the district would do it, and then, and then engage in a bond and move forward, and then we wouldn't have a long-range planning process, because the district's been pretty stable for, I mean, we were a hundred kids in the garage house for a long, long time, which means in terms of at least growing through, or, or enhancing your district's growth, is not as necessary as it is currently and will likely stay for the next ten years probably.
Thank you. I can't remember Shannon's name, but I would like to see the reserve policy issue in the work session, especially with the issues that we've had in the last couple of years.
I 100% agree with, that that's something we need to, we need to do.
My question for you, Michael, is how does, how does this change in the credit rating affect us today?
Uh, today it really doesn't give a heck of, yeah, but it would affect us if we, if we were to go out for, if we were to have one out for a bond like Thompson did and be looking at selling bonds, would that would affect us, that the, the interest rate would be different, right? It, it would, it would, it would be, I, they lowered us, you know, a peg, you know, in their, in their rating scale, so I mean, it's, I mean, it would, it would be a little bit higher, we, we would pay a little bit higher of an interest rate, or our bonds would, would, would sell for a little bit higher with this rating than they would have with the double A minus.
Okay, and is this something they look at every year, or is it a?
It's a, it's a three-year cycle.
So it would behoove us to ad. So it would behoove us to address these issues in some way, so we, we look to the future and look for a better.
Oh, I mean, I mean, absolutely, I mean, well, I mean, absolutely, I mean, from an S and P standpoint, and then also just from a financial strength standpoint.
And we're already, you know, starting on a new one, so it's not like it's going to be hugely, but obviously we can't do anything about what we have.
Yeah, we are where we are.
Yeah, we are where we are, okay, thank you.
Mr. Everest, can I get on my soapbox for a minute?
Please.
Okay, so, S and P is an interesting process, when we go through, S and P has a rubric they're supposed to rate you on, but then they take your rubric and they go to committee where you have humans. Did they give us a large committee or a small committee, do we know?
I don't know about the size of the committee. We, Superintendent Nielsen and I spoke kind of with two analysts, and they just said we were going to commit.
Okay, so, I'm just saying this for the general population of my soapbox. So what the S and P does is they send you a list of questions and items to provide before you go to the two analyst meeting, which is exactly one hour, not a minute less, not a minute more, meeting. And in that one hour, you have to describe who you are as an entity, the country you're in, and economic condition of the region you're in, including your financial position, and then you have to answer their questions again in only an hour. And then they go to, then they, the two analysts, there's a primary and a backup, in case one is sick, the primary rates you against their rubric, then they take you to committee. If it's a small committee, it's three to five, if it's a large committee, it's five to ten. And then the committee will literally debates you as an entity with each other, and the committee can go with or against the rubric. So it's not as cut and dry, financial ratings should be, there's a lot of human discretion involved in there, depending on your analyst. S and P went through a large employee turn, a lot of their analysts are twenty-five and under, they're very young analysts. And if you're seasoned analyst, you've seen a little bit more and you've been exposed to more, and you've potentially worked at an entity to understand more about how finance and accounting actually works. So I want to give a little bit of grace to the process of S and P is hard because it should be cut and dry, but it's up to humans in the end. Second of all, I would love it if you could see a copy of the full report, I know it's public and I can go look it up, but I'm lazy, if you'll just send it, I appreciate it.
Just send that to just.
It's, it's like four pages long, it's not even long, like the report is really.
If it's only four pages, that's fine.
It's really short. And then the other thing about being knocked down credit ratings, I think it hurts pridefully that you get knocked down a credit rating, like I'm sure that wasn't exciting when you got that, you probably said a few words, because I, I would say something as well. In scheme, when you go to market for bonds, this seems like a very low, low hit, and it stinks, and I'm not excited for it either. But in terms of credit ratings, when you go to go do it with your interest rating, it only means point one to point three percent difference between ratings. So, doesn't mean we're going to go out to bond and it's going to be ten percent or eight percent, like right now, government treasuries are like three, three seven five or something like that overnight government treasuries, or the long-term bond treasury or something like that. So it would only be point two or point three delta from, from that overnight rate. So it's not terribly a lot, just depending on the size of bond it could cost a lot, but I just want to like put that out there as well. Sucks, I think there's things we can do to improve our situation between now and going to bond, but at the end, I, it's kind of outside of the district's control complete, it's another entity's opinion of who we are, and that's with, again, within an hour meeting. So, sucks, but.
Yeah.
You did what you could in your hour.
Well, and I would, I mean, I definitely wouldn't discount the, that second to last bullet point, the elevated debt burden relative to population. I mean, the bond project was, I mean, we, we took our bonding capacity.
It was very large, yeah.
And I mean, and that's, that's going to be a huge piece of it, because our, because our, our double A minus rating was based on a bonding capacity that was, you know, much less utilized.
Yeah, I think the other thing we need to do as well is, I know no one wants to bring this up, I'm just going to like put a pink elephant in the room and call it a pink elephant. The salary schedule, the salary schedule directly impacts our reserves. We've, I've talked to you in private about it, I feel like the steps, I don't know, we're gonna, I'm going to hear about it, right, I know, I'm stepping into now, but the, the percentage between some of these are too big, so that when you do a cola and the steps, it's, it, it creates a large deficit, and that's where we got ourselves into, if the differential between the rows, as wide of a percentage, we wouldn't have created so large deficits here. And so I really think fundamentally, as exciting and horrific as it is, we need to look at that salary schedule. Stepped in it and I get it, I put that out there, dropped the bomb. Please send your emails to Amanda.
Thank you.
You're right.
But before we get off to this subject, and I think, I think we need to tie it up with, we have a lot of these pieces ready to be put together, and I think we, we owe you and Superintendent Nielsen, Mr. Josh back there, a debt of gratitude, well, it's not use the word debt, owe you some gratitude, because we're, you know, we, Josh's position, we haven't, we just really haven't had that position, the capacity that he's operating at, and so from, as far as the financial planning standpoint is, it, I mean, it is, I don't need to tell anybody in this room, doing financial planning in a school district in the state of Colorado is really difficult because of the things that happened at the State House, we just don't, it's hard, it's hard to determine what the income piece is, but we're working really hard on figuring out what the costs are. I know that Josh has been working on an extended plan of, you know, what, what are our replacement, what are, what are our capital replacements, what are our expenses going to, what should those expenses look like? And, and we have our good friends too at, God, I just lost the name of it, the School Finance Project, who are also providing a lot of helpful data to get every school district in, in a better position as far as, you know, here's, here's what you can expect for the income, but really too, what you can expect for expenses and what your expenses should be, and, and policy or reserves should be. So, I, I know we've had, we had this really good discussion about reserve policy and, you know, this, this could be that, that piece that just kicks us to, to get it going, but we have all the pieces to, to put this together and, and put ourselves in a good position for the next, the next one in three years, other than the ones we can't control. If you want to go on.
All right. Just the last slide on this, just, you know, the, just the, the current lookout, outlook for S and P Global for the district is negative, and the report, they, you know, estimate a one chance rating could further, be further lowered if further reduction in the district's reserves occurs, so.
Can I make a comment about the negative look? I wouldn't get too twisted up about the negative outlook. When we went to bonds, we had a negative outlook, it was a different credit rating, but a negative outlook, and it had zero impact when we went to market. So the negative outlook is just, again, a human opinion.
And then, just to close this part out, upside, upside scenario, you know, we could be, go from negative to stable if, you know, basically if we do kind of what we were talking about doing, which is, you know, reversing the deficits, you know, because, you know, rebuild the district's reserves, the district's fund balance, then we have the potential of looking to a stable outlook with S and P.
That is funny too, though, because I attended Colorado, why can't I say the name of that, the School Finance Project?
Colorado School Finance Project.
I went to Colorado School Finance Project's session at the last board convention, and they, they specifically called us out, or when I was at the table, I was sitting at the group, that our reserves are too high in their estimation, 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 I can say that word.
It's just human opinion.
Right, but I, but right, isn't that interesting, that, that the people who like really know school finance look, are looking at our district and saying, you guys are a little high for, with your reserves for where you're at, but then you have somebody else coming like, no, your, your reserve too low.
It really depends on the individual.
Yeah.
I think the other thing, and learning for me, for sure, walking through this, right, and thinking about the conservative way we budgeted, and you're going to see as Michael talks about where we are student count, and we end up ninety-five students over what we budgeted, that looks a whole lot different as, if we're talking to these individuals from that standpoint in terms of where we are versus the seventy-five students we, we put in, which we did because we didn't know for sure, but it's a fascinating, there's a push pull there, right, that, that strategically thinking about that, right, makes a difference. And, and there's two places it's really tricky, when you're thinking about probably a business, but certainly a district. And when you're shrinking, trying to understand budget in a shrinking district is really challenging, but it's all challenging when you're trying to think about budget in a growing district, and I obviously would rather be where we are in a growing district, but it's tricky to know how do we, how expenses are they going to look, but also what is the actual revenue going to be, because here we sit tonight talking about revenue that's a lot more than we thought was coming into the district and what we budgeted for just whatever, four months or five months ago, so, I think, learning for us, but, and some first, for sure, some steps, but I appreciate Michael being able to share this with all of you tonight.
All right, the next item, so maybe a little bit better news, so, the financial status of the digital scoreboards at Roosevelt High School. Just a quick background, the district did purchase two Daktronic scoreboards, one for the stadium in twenty-twenty-three and one for the arena last year in twenty-twenty-four. In conjunction with the, well, relative to the first stadium scoreboard, the district created a sponsorship program to help finance these scoreboards. As of October thirty-first, the RHS Scoreboard Activity Fund had a positive balance of about forty-six hundred dollars, and that is after we paid the sixty-seven dollar lease payment on the stadium scoreboard in September. So, so right now, we're sitting at about six hundred dollars positive, looking at the sponsorship commitments that we have for the remainder of the fiscal year, we're anticipating about another fifty thousand dollars in sponsorship revenue to come in for the remainder of this year.
Michael, can I call out, I think, one of the things that clarified when I was talking to Michael about this slide, right now it looks like it's about fifty thousand dollars, but in reality, the board is bringing in about a hundred and twelve thousand, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars annually, so just.
About that.
And, and obviously we have the payment, we're paying on it to pay it off, we've got two more years to do that, but it's generating right now about a hundred and twelve, a hundred and fifteen thousand, and we haven't sold all the sponsorships that we have available, so to continue to grow, but that, that was good context for me when I was looking at this slide earlier, so.
And I don't recall, what, what is the payback amount over the five years, how much are they, how much are we paying back? Like, it sounds like we're making an additional profit besides just the payment?
So the, so the, the lease payments each year are fifty, fifty-seven thousand.
Okay, and we're making that obviously just by.
Yeah, I mean, so we made that payment in September, and so that, you know, and right now we're positive, you know, forty-six hundred dollars in that fund.
And I'm trying to call the additional money, is that going with the student activities? Or are we doing additional funds?
So right now, the, right now, all of the scoreboard, all the scoreboard revenue and expenditures are contained in one student activity account.
Okay.
So there, it's not, it, it's, right now it's just being used just for that.
Okay, let's try and remember, thank you.
Okay, and then preliminary student count update, so, you know, in subsequent slides and, you know, and in the board report, you know, I have kind of, you know, detailed tables on exactly what, you know, exactly where we are right now, so I can, I don't know if anyone else needs to go through those, or if there's any specific questions, and if not, I can answer any other questions the board may have.
We have capacity.
I really like that Amanda asked, asked for that and that it's here, it's so helpful to see what the capacity is, so thank you for doing that.
Absolutely, no, it's, it's very interesting for me as well.
The only question I have on, on those is, it's a silly question, so for the Melican Schools, we, we have it now as Melican Schools, will, will we wait until next year to break it, break MIS out on its own?
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
It's kind of convenience for this.
Yeah, I get it, I mean, that's going to be kind of, that's got to be kind of weird, but, okay, thank you.
Kind of another reason why I presented it this way was just so that you could kind of look at the flip between, you know, the Melican Schools and Pioneer.
Right. Yeah, because next year, it's kind of be nice if you could combine those two.
I hope they do.
I made two reports.
All right. Are you concluded?
I'm concluded.
Okay.
Unless you have the.
I always wait for you to say that, then I can say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does anybody have any further questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Everest.
Can I, I'm sorry, not a question for you, I think you're, oh. Superintendent Nielsen, can you remind me, we've talked before often about, I'm looking at us and the enrollment numbers here and seeing we are at twelve eighty-nine and capacity for that building is thirteen fifty, that's not, we're, we're not panicking at thirteen fifty, right?
We're not panicking at thirteen fifty, and I think it is important for the board to remember that inside of those numbers, we have some students that aren't set foot in, they're doing virtualing, they're still Roosevelt students, we have students that are off-campus taking classes at Ames. We do, we are tight in terms of classrooms that we're using, we're going to have to be creative, but that's important in a growing district is that we leverage the spaces we have, and I think it is important also to say, as, as the board knows, but I think it's important for the community to know, when we build that building, we, with the money we had, we were able to build a building with the common spaces, the lunchroom, the gyms, the Performing Arts Center for capacity of sixteen hundred, and classrooms that were thirteen fifty, and the ability to add other classrooms as we need, but I think it's, it is important to think about the boxes in, in that, I think there are, there are some who will say you're already full, well, we're not, and we've positioned ourselves as a district, I think the board positioned themselves long before I sat in this seat, thinking about how do we make that building flexible enough to handle what's coming.
And, and that was why I asked, you, you said all the things I wanted you to say, so. But the point for us is, we, we've added about a hundred students a year since we opened that building, and while we're not panicking at thirteen fifty, we're starting to have some serious conversations, probably next year, about what we're going to do. So just for us to be thinking, and for the long-range planning group to be thinking, it's not far in our future that we're talking about what needs to happen at Roosevelt High School, so.
Yeah, it, it is the most talked about piece of the long-range planning right now, as you can see what's happening at Roosevelt High School, and I think there's a lot going on there, right, it's, we are pulling students back who are leaving to go to other high schools, and we talked about it in this room from performing arts, it looks different right now than it looked five years ago, to just career opportunities that happen there that, that are hard to replicate other places, the building, the way it was designed, the way it's operating, the teachers in it, I mean, it's a pretty special place to be right now. now, and those places tend to attract students. So.
All right. Well, let's move on to our consent agenda. Our adopted amendment procedure provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval to the board by a single motion. Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. I do want to point out, this particular consent agenda includes this out of state wrestling trip. This is kind of something that we're going to try to do a little differently than we have in the past. So this is just the request for the trip. This is not necessarily the request for any money.
There's actually two.
There are two of them there. But this just allows the the coaches or the whoever whoever's planning a trip to get their reservations in order, maybe their entry documentation in for tournaments. We would expect then to see them come back if there's a request at a later date. But no sense in taking up a whole lot more time with presentations, just going to have to be followed up again with another one when it comes to the money. So that being said.
I'll momentarily adopt the consent agenda.
We have a motion by Director Musgrave, a second by Director Johnson to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Does anybody need a recess, a break? We'll move into our old business, our first item, well, our only item of old business is the final reading of the CASB recommended policy amendments that we discussed at our last meeting.
Yeah, I think board president, board members, the slate of policies that we had at our meeting here a month ago and then looked at in our work session, we would ask tonight that we go for a second reading.
Any questions?
These are out on the website for a month or close to you. No, no comment from anyone?
No comment. I think the only feedback we had, I think we, Director Musgrave and Jessica and I went back and forth around ACR. And as we talked about in our work session, rendition from legal counsel was to take a section of ACR, which we redlined in an hour, which is how it's been out. And it comes out and all of it in sense was replaced by the ACA, which was is a new policy we bring forward tonight. And that was the recommendation on how to handle the naming pieces. And that, and that has been out also right since. So.
So there's a whole bunch of them there, and I won't feel, I'm feeling pretty charitable tonight. So I'm not going to, if anybody makes a motion, I'm requesting that they read each one by letter. There is kind of a recommended action that you could use that motion if you so desire.
I will move to adopt the amendments to the well-drafted Board of Education policies as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice President Sisano, a second by Director Proctor to adopt the amendments as presented. Any discussion on motion?
I do, I do have some, just one thing to say. I, I don't like taking all these cap policies. They come to us, and this didn't just address Title IX. It didn't just address House Bill, I think it's 1251 and 10, 794 or something like that. It didn't just address those. They always add a bunch of verbiage. And then we have to consult our legal counsel. I mean, right now we're looking, we have like, he printed out, it's like two and a half, three inches of policy. It's too much. It's, it's too wordy. They add too much. I think we really need to look at how we're adopting policy. We're not like every other district in the state. And I think just taking these blind sweeps with CASB, how much, how much do you pay CASB for our fees and our, do you bill ballpark?
Off the top of my head, it is round.
Well, it's changing. There is a new fee structure. And it's based on stipulation at this point.
Okay.
It's a, it's in a ballpark of 30,000.
30,000? And that, that's all the recommendations they send us? Or is that just our face fee?
I mean, I, I believe it's all inclusive.
I, I don't like all these blind policies that we're, we're just adopting because they say so. I don't think it's a one size fits all. I don't like them to consult our legal counsel to make it fit us. I think we're spending money on, on a service that's, that's not serving us. And they're always late. So we're paying them a lot of money and they're late all the time. And they add a bunch of crap I don't think needs to be in this stuff. So that's all I have to say about that. I, I, we don't even know all our policy. I mean, we messed up with the, the policy last year on contractors. And, and I think it just leaves so much room for error when we have so much extra verbiage and all the extra stuff they put in there about harassment and it's not applicable to state or federal law. They just add a bunch of stuff in there. And I think it fits our district. I don't think they're serving us well. Sorry, Michael, I know. That's just how I feel about, about the, the recommendations we've been getting over the past couple of years. That's all.
Ms. Diogna, would you please pull the board?
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
Amanda Proctor?
Yes.
Nate DiGiano?
Yes.
Amy Musgrave?
Yeah.
Yes. All right. We'll move into our special business. Our first item of special business is consideration of our, it jumped on me, I apologize. RHS Design Build Amendment number 27. Superintendent Nielsen.
We have a couple members, and James, are you speaking tonight on both?
I can.
All right. We'd love for you to share with us both, let's start with amendment 27.
So amendment 27, Design Build Amendment. This is the final amendment for Roosevelt High School. This is our unused construction contingency that will be returned or essentially lower the contract price. This is a value of $18,902.25 being taken out of the contract or lowering the contract. This is the final amendment from AP for the high school. This will essentially close this contract.
Any questions on that? Man, that was, that was well budgeted, right? That is, that's pretty dang close.
Right. I'm gonna Sorry, can I just ask a quick question? So the unused construction contingency, where does, where does that go to at this point? Does it go into projects that we're doing? Or?
Mr. Rivers, you're probably
It's in the building. I mean, it never left the building fund. So yeah, it's, it's there.
Thank you. I thought that was probably the case, but I am not the budget genius at this table.
Okay, I'm going to motion to return unused construction contingency in the amount of $18,902.25, bringing the total cost of the project to $107,219,365.69.
Second.
Good luck.
Oh, I can, I can, I can navigate this. We've got a motion by Director Proctor, a second by Vice President Sisano to return the unused construction contingency as presented
It's a good one.
With the finalized project amount as presented. Any discussion on the motion?
It's a big deal.
It's a pretty big deal.
This project.
It's a pretty big deal. I'm, you know, I'm just, for me, it's, I'm just so excited that, because you hear so many times about budget overruns. And man, we just, the, you guys did such a great job of getting this right where we said it was going to be. And that feels good.
So it does.
Ms. Diogna.
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
Amanda Proctor?
Yes.
Nate DiGiano?
Yes.
Amy Musgrave?
Yes.
Michael Wiss?
Yes.
Well done, you guys. Okay, let's go to Design Build Amendment number 12 for Roosevelt Middle School.
Yes, Design Build Amendment number 12, Roosevelt Middle School, same thing here, closing that contract. We have an unspent construction contingency of $25,664.68. So we will decrease the sum of the contract by that value. This will close this contract.
So the money remains from the building? Josh is going to turn around and spend the money from the building fund?
Until the next item.
Yeah, the next item is gone. Sure agree.
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, I'm going to move to return the unused construction contingency in the amount of $25,664.68, bringing the total cost of the project to $43,171,940.51.
I have a motion by Vice President Sisano, a second by Director Proctor, or Johnson, sorry, to return the unused construction contingency on the Roosevelt Middle School project as presented, bringing the total cost of the project to $43,171,940.51. Any discussion?
Also a big deal.
Also a deal. Ms. Diogna.
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
Amanda Proctor?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy Musgrave?
Yes.
Michael Wiss?
Yes.
Do we have cake? It's okay.
Or warm snickerdoodles?
You talk about it, but if you're not bringing it.
I should bring it sometime.
All right, let's go to our next item. This is the approval of the RTU rooftop units at Roosevelt Middle School, RFP. Mr. Newberry, you're going to take it or?
I'm going to turn it over to John to talk a little bit about the process and the recommendation we were making.
Thank you for having me here tonight. As we talked about in the work session last week, our, just to go out to bid for the HVAC units that were not in scope for Roosevelt Middle School, this will bring that school fully new if we decide to move on this. Staff recommends that we go with American Air's bid. One thing I did want to mention, Director Proctor asked about how many hours we put in RFP, and off the top of my head, I spouted out, I don't know, 16. But Scott and I had a chat about, don't forget about your phone calls, your emails, your, your time you actually spent at the computer on this, the time you spent in the building looking at why these problems existed, not to mention Accenture and our owners were at the time with Jacob and his hours, trying to figure out why these weren't in scope. So with, with that in mind, we're probably looking closer to see if I plus minus
Thank you for doing that.
From last December until now. So the staff recommendation still stands that we go with American Air for the roof. We're happy to answer any questions.
We talked this over pretty thoroughly in the work session, so I don't know if we have a lot of questions, but just so it's on record, you checked references with American Air. I know this is the first time we've worked with them. So they, they met all their reference checks. They're a good one to work with.
They had really, really good referencing. They had, we had asked the companies to try to get anything closer in the last three years of what we were asking. And they had an exact scope with the town of Estes. So it was, you know, got to call him and talk to him, and they're really liking them and exclusively use them like how we use them technically. And so that was good to hear. And then their other projects were also commercial projects for the references, and those went really well, too. Some bigger, one was smaller. But it was all within the last three years.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
But the time, thank you for doing that, because I think it's important to understand that RFP, that doesn't seem like a lot of money, the backend work it takes to get it off the ground here.
That's a good question. Sorry, I wasn't prepared for it.
Well, it sounds like it was a humbling experience to go through the number of hours, too, to owl up. Lord, thank you.
I'll make a motion to award the contract to American Air Heating and Conditioning to supply the HVAC units needed to restore Roosevelt Middle School to complete operational condition.
Second.
Got a motion by Director Johnson, a second by Director Proctor to approve and award the contract to American Air Heating and Conditioning to supply the HVAC units at RMS. Any discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question. The, the, does the motion need to call out the amount? I mean, we have the bids in front of us. It's all public record, but do we need to call that out in the motion?
I don't think it would be necessary.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'm surprised nobody brought up RMS, RTU, RFP. This kind of rolls up still, right?
Rolls right up.
Ms. Diogana.
Monica Johnson?
Yes.
Amanda Proctor?
Yes.
Nate DiGiano?
Yes.
Amy Musgrave?
Yes.
Michael Wiss?
Yes.
All right. Let's move on to our new business. This is our first reading of our CASB recommended policy amendments. Superintendent Nielsen.
Thanks, President Williams, board members. Tonight, you see, I think there's six policies. It's a new one, is ACA, which we, that one we talked about at the work session. So we can certainly open it up and look at it. There are several policies that deal with resources, library resources, policy that separates out, resources that are more curriculum nature, and then two practices. One would, how would a parent with standing bring forward a complaint? And then the process the superintendent would, would go through to deal with a complaint as it came forward. So happy to open, look at any of the policies we want. We have worked with Melissa around what we, our perceptions and what we needed. So again, happy to look, but also Melissa's here to answer questions if we have. As you're thinking about that, our practice will be the same as the last month, first reading, an opportunity to get feedback over the next couple of weeks, a chance for us to do conversation if we need to in between, asking for a second reading at our first meeting in December, I think our only meeting in December.
The library one, you, why, why is it split into two policies now? I'm not sure. I understand the, what, what's the triggering point to split them to two versus just split them into two?
Melissa, you want to talk about your, why you made that recommendation to us?
What the new law did was
Can you say which law it was? Sorry, I'm just trying to stand the root cause to now. Sorry, I'm just trying to stand the root cause to now. For the library ones. Sixty-three, you said? Thank you.
Twenty-five oh six three.
Oh, thank you.
And so there's been a lot of discussion, I think, across the nation, right? About library books and removal of books and the constitutional standards. Colorado General Assembly passed this law to incorporate some of the First Amendment standards, expect boards to have a policy. A lot of boards already had policy. Our firm has worked with several boards about really making the policy more robust because of the wave of complaints that have been coming through, to have a way to process those. So the new law makes a distinction between instructional materials and library resources. So the board, the law requires that the board have a policy on the selection of those things. Um, and they're two different things, instructional materials. So you have your curriculum that is board approved, you go through your big process, right? To do curriculum. Instructional materials are in the classroom materials that are kind of in addition to curriculum. And so there's a policy around the selection of those. And then library resources have to have their own selection. There has to be a policy on selection. So we've, CASB has come forward with, I think I J was already in place and that I J L is new. So that's why there's kind of the breakout there. Um, and then CASB did is added the reconsideration. So the board and the district has complete discretion to select materials. It's the removal of library books is where you start looking at constitutional challenges. Because of First Amendment right to the access to ideas. And that is how that standard comes into play. So that reconsideration of library materials is a special thing under the Constitution and now state law. So CASB put that all together in one I policy. Like, we have looked at this as a team and we've approached it over the last few years and, and still think it's the best approach is to keep it with K, K E C. And there's already K E, your public complaint policy. And then this is kind of a companion policy to cover objections to instructional materials and library resources. And that's just kind of, it just makes sense to us as a school law team that we kind of keep with that. This is where the public goes to look for, or file a complaint. And then I is around your selection and instructional type things. So that's kind of the thinking between breaking it apart. So, I mean, that is like different than what CASB recommended, which was this reconsideration piece stuck in I. For transparency, I don't know that that would be as easy to find. But anyway, so that's kind of the framework piece.
Any other questions?
So the CASB on K E C, they've have K E C. We had developed this K E C dash R to really spell out if you get a complaint, this is how it's going to work. So there's no kind of flumbling around trying to figure out how you're going to approach a complaint. So it's really, and then the board review, that there's a board review process. And you can decline to review it if you want. Which is typically the way like we recommend with appeals, to give, let the board decide whether they want to spend their time hearing the appeal or not. But I think the CASB version, um, no, never mind. I think about another thought, I think they did have that board appeal in there, too.
Okay, well.
I have a question, I'm just figuring out how to word this. Um, so just on, just on, if a parent or a librarian, the total of library resources, they make a complaint, it's up to the board to decide if that complaint will be.
So the, the way the policies were did, the complaint, if, if it's just about their own child, they can make a request under I M B B to exclude their own child from material. But if they want to, the district to consider removal of a book or stripping access to a book, then first they're supposed to go to the principal and have a conversation. And if that doesn't resolve it, then they can file a complaint with the district. Um, and the superintendent would be in charge of putting a meeting together that may include like recent graduates, staff members, teacher, librarians, administrator. And they would review the material, make a recommendation, and then the superintendent would make a decision. And then the parent, and it has to be, one thing that the law changed was the complaint has to be from a parent of a student at the school where the library resource is. So, or there were districts that were getting complaints from all over the country and kind of outstanding issues. Anyway, so, so then if the parent didn't like the superintendent's decision, the parent could try an appeal to the board and then the board would decide whether they're going to take up that appeal here.
And I guess this would be the end of the question. Do you, uh, do you have, obviously, like, to outline who would be a part of the committee? Do you have an idea of what process the committee would go to in deciding?
It's in there, so it's in K E C R, it spells out pretty clearly what the superintendent has to do.
Kind of things they could be considering and. And so there's some described there, you know, in terms of what the board wants to put on that list. Kind of what we've got together as best thinking, it's worked for some boards, but obviously there's.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I, from what I've heard of other districts who tackle some of the issues. And it differs the process between districts, so do you have the school review itself committees that you just outlined for us? So I was just making sure that there is an outline process for what, um, for reviewing these types of complaints? And also that it says somewhere in the, the, and I, I am reading this now. I'm very glad that we were reading it, that the book needs to be judged, or the material, whatever, needs to be judged as a whole and that the people who are reading have an audit. Because there's been cases in other districts that I've really known.
Yeah, it's interesting, the CASB recommendation said the decision had to be made, I think, within 10 days. I don't know you, but I don't have time to read a whole book in 10 days generally. Um, like you have like other responsibilities, so I know that's been a challenge. We have 60 days in there. Some districts even make it longer, like a western. And you only have to read the same book every, I think it's two years. And that's in the, the new statute, too. Usually the committees, I know, they want to have time to actually read the materials before they meet and discuss it.
Well, that is my, speak of my reading experience. I usually take like two or three times before I actually understand what I'm reading. And so I do, we tend to base this in a little short monologue if you have time to. Or whoever the committee would be to read upon subjects and be able to board process and of course. Exactly, for complaint intent versus what actually happened. I just wanted to hear that.
Any other questions? Okay, like, so this is first reading, so these will be posted on the website, available for public review and comment and most likely come back to us in December, possibly January, depending what our timeline is. But for, for a second read. Thank you, Melissa. Do we have any citizen comments on general topics? All right. Well?
We have one other item.
We do?
Other item, be necessary.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we need to schedule a special. For board members to do office of office and, um, and then go through seating in the board. So our preference would be to try to accommodate that sometime next week. So wondering about dates, times next week that you all have and we can look at it now or just get to work through text with you tomorrow and figure out what the right, our timing is. Our, our initial offer would be, we have District Advisory Committee is already here, four to five on Wednesday, which means Monica's already in the building. So, um, is it fourth, is five to six, sorry, yeah. So we can, we can do a meeting right after that, which would have several people already in that Wednesday night would work for you next week. Give you a chance if you want to invite families to let you take the oath or not. But we're going through that process of seating in the board next, next week. Wednesday work?
Yeah, I believe it availability next week, so Wednesday's fine.
I'm already here, so it works for me.
We thought we'd start with at least one in the house.
Yeah, yeah.
I work, but I might be able to get off. What time are you thinking?
Six thirty, should we do six thirty? We might bring queso in.
Okay.
Maybe we should take any for a queso.
I may feel like you take so, I'm just going to, I'm going to say it, I stand by my queso. Yeah, I should be able, I should be able to work.
So we're at the 12th, thanks. You can come to right now.
Yeah, six thirty on the 12th.
Why'd you just land on?
It's an eagle fly.
He was looking for warmth. Okay, uh, so Wednesday, November 12th at 6:30 PM here. And we can get posted. Awesome. Okay. Now can we go home? We'll go ahead and adjourn at 7:58. Thank you, everybody.